None, I will close the public comment period. And we'll go to the consent agenda for the approval of minutes for July 12, 2018, and July 26, 2018. Do any of the commissioners have any changes to the minutes?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve of the minutes?
I move we approve of the minutes of both those meetings.
Second motion.
Okay, second, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
opposed.
Got it, okay. So, three yeses, one abstention. The next item on the agenda is going to be a public hearing for extension of time for 2003-032. And Deborah, I think you're going to be doing the presentation on that for us today.
I am.
Thank you.
This is Planner 3. The project is an extension of time for John Ellis's Cedar Ridge developments. And he has requested an extension of time of six years for the tentative subdivision tract map. No changes to the previously approved tentative subdivision map and associated entitlements are being requested as a part of this action. Property is located on Highway 4 west of the community of Arnold. The parcels are located on the southerly side of the highway, and access to the site is via Redtail Road. I zoomed out here so you could see the location of the project relative to the community of Arnold. The highlighted yellow parcels in the lower left side of the map are the project parcels. They are situated between Highway 4 and Moran Road. And there is a long history associated with this project. In the 1992 timeframe, tentative map for Ridgcrest Estates was approved by the Board of Supervisors. That was in earlier John Ellis developments. He returned to the county with a request for a determination of substantial conformance for his Phase 1 final map for that project. And that particular project included a secondary access road from the site out to Moran Road. And in the 2002 timeframe, it became clear that this road was difficult, if not impossible, to construct owing to topographic features on that side of the parcel. It was very difficult to construct the road out in that direction. And I believe also a determination was made that a secondary exit out onto Moran Road would not be the most optimum exit in the event of a major fire. So, but at the time, a determination of substantial conformance couldn't be made because the project was without a secondary access.
I'm sorry, Deborah, do you have your mic on?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it on now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, he returned with a new project. It involved a general plan amendment, a zoning amendment, and a tentative parcel map entitled the Cedar Ridge Project. And the Board of Supervisors approved that project in 2005. That project include an emergency access/secondary access road in the northerly part of the project that returned back to Highway 4. That emergency access, at the time of project approval, was only a road easement. It crossed a parcel, and we refer to this as the Pond Parcel, that belonged to somebody else. So, that, I think that's one of the main reasons why this project has lingered, and it actually involved two project Ridgcrest Estates followed by Cedar Ridge. If there's anything else I need to cover. This is a picture of the approved subdivision map. You can see it, the blue image on the pond, the hatchet blue image is the pond. We refer to that as the Pond Parcel. The emergency access road easement is depicted on this particular map, crossing a parcel belonging to others but made a part of this project as its secondary access. I've included a couple of copies, seven final maps were recorded for this depicting Phase 1, Unit 1 of the Cedar Ridge project. I included them only because this one is a nice depiction of these 36 parcels that were recorded as Phase 1, Unit 1. And this one depicts as a part of the recorded first phase of the map, the emergency access/secondary access road to the project. And subsequent to project approval, in the 2006 timeframe, Mr. Ellis was able to purchase the Pond Parcel outright. That does not make it a part of this subdivision. It does not make it a part of the action that's requested today because at the time of recordation of the map under consideration today, it was considered not to be a part of the subdivision. This map depicts the Cedar Ridge project. They are all marked by the green check mark. It depicts the recorded parcels of Unit 1, Phase 1 at the bottom of the map. The reason I am including this parcel is, the planning department actually received a phone call from one of the residents of the Rancho Paradiso subdivision that you can see just north of this subdivision on the map. And they were concerned, perhaps, that the project applicant intended to purchase some of the parcels in Rancho Paradiso, particularly lots that were closest to the Cedar Ridge subdivision. And having done that, that these parcels would become a part of the Cedar Ridge development. And then somehow, the Rancho Paradiso access road might also be made a part of the Cedar Ridge subdivision. So, anyway, the planning department notes that "we have no knowledge of any intent by the applicant to acquire any additional lands. There is no direct benefit to the applicant to do so. Purchase of any adjacent parcels does not make them a part of the Cedar Ridge development." And again, the access road, secondary access road easement, emergency access road easement already exists. And, I don't know, I don't think I have a cursor to do this with, but you can actually see in the Pond Parcel, and that is the main parcel that's bisected by the blue line stream, you can see the secondary access road on the aerial photograph. It already exists on the site. You can see it perhaps better in this image. This is a low-angle aerial image looking at Phase 1, Unit 1 on the bottom part of the parcel. Through the middle of the photograph, you can see Redtail Hawk Road, the main access road to the property. And if you look up at the top margin of the photograph, you can see the existing emergency access road which connects to Highway 4, just north of a very small development there. The current status of the emergency access road at State Route 4 is this. There is a requirement in the project that the applicant obtain an encroachment permit from Caltrans to construct the encroachment onto Highway 4. That is a condition of approval of the project. It is included in the subdivision agreement executed with the Public Works Department and the county. And it is something that will be done at a future date when the development moves into the more northerly part of the site. So, again, the applicant has applied for an extension of time pursuant to Calvera's PPE Code. And in order to do that, he needs to demonstrate that a good faith effort has been made in the three items: pursuing approvals from other agencies, preparing engineered design plans, and actual construction activities. I've included the Table 1 from the staff report that describes the main actions and the activities that have been undertaken in project development. There has been a great deal of work already done with Caltrans. Obviously, more work remains to be done. Water and wastewater service provision have been constructed, working with CCWD. There has been acquisition of the Pond Parcel to allow for full construction of the emergency access road, secondary access road for the project. And engineered design plans have been in preparation for further phases of the project. I note here that for Redtail Hawk Road, certainly, working with Caltrans, and for the work done with CCWD, these developments were done promptly after approval of the map, but they were sized to address full buildout of the parcel. So, they are applicable, and this is work that has been done in preparation of recordation of subsequent phases of the map. So, again, this table does list the total costs for each agency. It lists the approximate timing when each of these activities were done. And, you know, pursuant to documentation submitted to the planning department, there are ongoing maintenance and development costs on an annual basis that are accruing to John to continue to move forward with this project. And that's also indicated on the table. So, a SEQA determination was made at the time of project approval. And the approved mitigated negative declaration remains the appropriate SEQA document on which to base this extension of time. The project was routed to regulatory and trustee agencies with the goal of getting some sort of an assessment of any concerns that they might have. We received no responses from Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game, or the Army Corps of Engineers. I note that there is a pond in the vicinity. The pond, again, is on a parcel that is not a part of this action. There is also, there is a reach of the project where the Blue Line Stream actually lies on project lands. And that piece of property has been designated as recreational environmental protection combining zone. So, that is a set aside of lands that will remain open, and it will serve to protect the creek. So, as we were not able to come up with any apparent additional adverse impact that might happen, we staff did make the determination that the approved mitigated negative declaration remains appropriate. The applicant has requested a time extension of six years. This represents the total amount of subdivision life that is left for this project pursuant to the subdivision map act. Another important point, I think, that needs to be made at this time, the applicant did file a timely request for an extension of time. He filed that in April of 2017. The map itself expired in June of 2017. Approval of the proposed three-year extension will extend the life of the map out three years from the current expiration date of the map. That is different than three years' time from the date of the planning commission, i.e., you know, based on my count, if he were to be granted a three-year extension today, that would give him roughly 21 additional months. Part of that is owing to the amount of time it took to process this in the planning department. It is owing to the amount of time it took to collect all of the evidence that we needed to document the good faith effort made by the applicant. So, the planning commission, at its discretion, may make a determination that an extension of time exceeding three years is warranted, given the size and scope of a development, given the economic conditions in the county at the time. So, the staff has included two recommendations in this submittal. The recommendation that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the standard three-year extension of time for this map, or alternatively, a draft revised resolution that the planning commission approve a six-year extension of time rather than a three-year extension of time. So, that would be at the discretion of the planning commission. This concludes my presentation. This is an image of the intersection of Redtail Hawk Road and another street on the subdivision. It's a very attractive development. It is appropriately placed as an infill development between Moran Road and Highway 4. And this is what it looks like. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have some questions, just to clarify. What, on page five of your staff report, you talk about the phased final map. Does that, did that pertain to Phase 1, Unit 1? It's unclear to me what that term means. And it looks to me as if we have, some of the subdivision is already approved. And, see, I need to be...
A Phase 1, Unit 1 final map was recorded.
And that means it is not anything we're considering today?
Correct. I'll go back to, this image right here works because it shows you the existing parcels in the lower-left quadrant of this image all exist as recorded parcels. They are developed, 11 of them have been sold. A number of them have homes constructed on them. The parcels with the blue check marks were part of the tentative map approval, and final maps have not been submitted for these. Now, one of these parcels is zoned primarily residential. One of them is zoned C1 commercial. One of them is zoned C2 commercial, so ultimate buildout. And one of them is zoned R3 multifamily residential. So, ultimate buildout of this project is going to include a commercial component, and it's going to include a multifamily residential component in future. But at this point, the lots that you see on the bottom of that image are Unit 1, Phase 1. They are recorded, they are sold, and they're in the process of being developed.
Thank you.
So, by recordation of Unit 1, Phase 1, and with the costs associated with off-site improvements for the project, that's another factor that phases into the life of a subdivision. With an appropriate expenditure of funds off-site, an additional three years can be added to the life of a subdivision map. And that's one of the actions that did take place in the past.
So, the August 10, 2018, letter from the developer says there are no further discretionary approvals required. And yet, I think you mentioned that there's an encroachment permit for the secondary road that will be required.
There is an encroachment permit required for construction of that road. So, I'm not certain what he meant by that statement, but...
We'll ask him.
We'll ask him.
Okay. So, you're not, you don't know whether there are other discretionary approvals?
Well, there are other discretionary improvements. He will need to record subsequent maps, subsequent final maps, that match the approved tentative parcel map. And there will need to be development plans submitted for, obviously, the multifamily residential and both the C1 and C2 commercial. So, there will be additional approvals.
And those last two that you were talking about, those are part of Public Works building?
Well, they will also be part of the planning department because there will be site plan review required in order to make sure he complies with all of the zoning requirements, landscaping, parking, access, et cetera.
And in his dealing with CCW, I think it was CCWD, the water industry, it was unclear to me as to whether each lot has been already piped, or, he's spent a lot of money.
Yes.
I don't know what the status of the water system is, or is this something I should ask him?
I can, I need to go back to the table. If I, next, where am I? I've done something wrong here. If I can find my, no. I'm looking for Table 1 from, here we go. All of the existing lots have been piped.
Existing lots, meaning Phase 1?
Phase 1, Unit 1, existing lots have been piped.
But the other ones have not.
Right. And the connection to the CCWD water system out at the road has been constructed. A lift station has been constructed.
What is that?
It's a technical thing. It helps collect the wastewater and lift it to a point at which CCWD can easily carry it away. And these are all improvements that were sized for the full development. Ultimately, they are constructed by the applicant at the applicant's cost, and they are conveyed to CCWD. And as indicated on Table 1, that conveyance did take place. Grant and transfer of water and wastewater facilities, sewer lift station and public utility easement to CCWD happened in the 2008 timeframe.
Okay. And in trying to determine whether an extension to time is appropriate, and whether, if so, whether it's three years or six years, I need to get a clearer understanding on my own part as to what's left to be done.
I'm taking you back to the recorded map. This, well, excuse me, this is the tentative map. This is what was recorded at the time of tentative map approval. I wish I had a pointer here.
Give me the cursor.
Can I get the cursor over there? I'm not, oh, here we go, here we go. Can you see?
Great.
Wait, wait, wait. I got this. Okay. Down here, these are the already recorded maps, already recorded parcels. These, and up into this direction, are residential parcels that have a tentative approval, and they are not recorded. So, this, in order to complete the development, he would need to record that.
But what steps does he have to take in order to be ready to record that?
He needs to prepare a final map. He needs to submit that to Public Works and the planning department. And we make a determination of substantial conformance, that those are consistent with the tentative map approvals that were issued. At the time that he prepares that map, he then has the spatial information he needs to do the water piping to each one of the lots. But typically, that is not required until it is confirmed that the map can be recorded. He also, again, he has the commercial parcel and the multifamily residential parcel, and those will require additional submittals to the county. And depending on what is designed to occupy those parcels, that will determine a certain amount of additional work with water conveyance, wastewater conveyance into the system that already exists on the parcel now.
And then, if I could just clarify that, the subsequent development of the multifamily and commercial lots are not a part of the subdivision. The subdivision is creation of the lots. And so, whatever is necessary to, whatever the conditions of approval were that were required for the creation of that lot, and it not having gone through all the conditions, specifically, you know, provision of water and sewer connection to serve X number of acres of commercial, or, you know, a certain number of units of multifamily, would be necessary to, you know, bring it to the parcel at the subsequent development of those, the multifamily and the commercial lots. That would be a separate project. I don't believe there are, there could be sort of a by right type of development that would, you know, along with conformance of the zoning, and they meet all of our standards, they just go through the normal building permit process. I don't know if there was a planned development component to that that would require a subsequent review by the planning commission. But this map, what we're asking for here is, what are the, what expenses have been made towards the development of the subsequent phases of this? Unit 1 is already off the, already recorded, and so that's done. So, any expenses towards the development of the subsequent phases, you know, the excess sizing of the infrastructure to serve Phases 2 and 3, et cetera, or any other engineering work done towards completion of that, is what we'd be looking at today for, you know, substantial conformance with the requirements.
And I don't see, at least for first glance, the exhibit that showed the expenses, that it's split off between what had been expended for Phase 1 and what's been expended.
Yes, and just, you know, looking at that, and I realize that we probably could have done a little better job of sort of trying to figure out, you know, what was expended on Phase 1, and what expenses were for the subsequent phases. And hopefully, Mr. Ellis can explain that to you better than we have.
And he asked for six. You recommended in your staff report, three years. I assume we could split the difference if we felt that...
It's entirely at...
Three years from 2017, is it?
It's 21 months, or...
Yeah, it's 21, the three years is actually a 21-month extension from now.
Yes, that's correct.
From today, yes.
Then we could say, well, no, let's make it four years or five years.
It's entirely at the planning commission's discretion.
And why did you recommend three rather than...
Actually, I have not made a specific recommendation. I have included both the standard recommendation of three years and the revised recommendation of possibly six years. But again, as three years is our standard, that is what the resolution states that is included in the planning commission package.
The practice of the county has been to grant three-year extensions for tentative maps. Since the original approval is good for three years, it just seems like that's a reasonable timeframe. You know, we don't know what's going to happen six years from now, if the economy is still sluggish as it is today, or there's other circumstances that would warrant further extension, you know, then you could come back and request additional time if necessary.
And since we're looking at whether there's been a good faith attempt, we can consider the economic situation as tempering the good faith attempts? I mean, I don't see how that directly enters into...
I don't know that it does directly enter into it. You know, the reason the law is as it is, is because of...
Economic factors.
Of economic factors or other factors. There, you know, there are a number of reasons why a nap, you know, isn't developed within the three-year timeframe. It's typically...
It seems like a perfectly good reason why it hasn't happened.
It is a good reason, but it's not legislated. That's one of the findings we need to make.
Well, but that legislation says include but not limited to, or something of that sort.
And remember also that the state has granted a number of extensions for that very reason, because of the economic downturn.
That's true.
The state granted, you know, additional, I'm thinking it was like six years already on top of that, so...
I'll withdraw, pardon me.
While we're on that subject, if we wanted to do a three-year extension but specify today as the starting point, is that possible?
You know, I think it would be better, just so that it's clear, you know, because the map is good for three years, and we extend it from that date. If you want to grant additional time, you know, grant four years, or grant three and a half years, or whatever timeframe you want, but keep the clock running from the same timeframe, because otherwise, we're going to get to potentially, you know, at the end of, you know, the maximum, six years...
And that's June of 17 is when it expires?
June of 17 would have been the expiration date, but for the timely filing for the request. And so, the map goes into sort of limbo stage if we don't approve it before it actually expires. He could not record a subsequent phase between June of 17 and approval of an extension. But the extension would essentially be retroactive to that date. So, if you're inclined to grant, you know, three years from today, I would say, well, just, you know, give him four, four and a half years, or whatever timeframe you think is appropriate. And then, that way, the timeframe is continuous from the original approval date.
I've got some questions.
Okay.
Mr. Ladish asked what has left to be done to meet the conditions of the map, and you said, prepare a final map. He also has to get the encroachment permit from Caltrans, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Anything else?
But he has bonded for the encroachment permit from Caltrans as part of a subdivision agreement that he executed with Public Works. And this is typical for subdivision developments. If you want to begin recordation of the phases of the map prior to completing all the improvements, you... you can execute a subdivision map, excuse me, a subdivision agreement with the county and bond for those improvements. And he has done so.
Okay. What else does he have to do to meet the conditions of the map and be able to record? I'm looking, do these questions have reference to the length of any extension?
Right.
I think the biggest expense typically associated with a subdivision map are actually the improvement requirements. Construction of roads, extension of water and sewer lines, those kinds of things. The process is typically that engineered plans are prepared, a cost estimate is made, and the developer enters into a subdivision improvement agreement with the county that, and they pay a bond, or they provide a bond that says that, you know, that the costs of those improvements will be covered, plus it's usually 150% to cover labor and materials as well as the actual construction cost. That improvement agreement has a certain timeframe on it. And so the map is recorded, which allows then the sale of those lot, or, you know, the potential sale of those lots. Within the timeframe of the improvement agreement, the developer then would make those improvements, you know, and actually construct the, the roads, water lines, sewer lines, et cetera. So those are the, that's the real big cost, is actually the physical improvements to the ground. But that's typically not done until after the map is recorded. And it's, those improvements are bonded for, but the upfront cost would be the engineering cost to design those roads and water line extensions.
But the, it looks like the engineered design plans for Phase 2 are 75% complete now. And so I'm having trouble seeing why it would take six years to do what's being discussed Anything more can be said on that?
Well, I think that's why we have typically allowed for a three-year extension, and if more time is necessary, then an applicant can come back again for a subsequent request. In other jurisdictions, the timed extensions are, you know, granted for a year or maybe two years. We've been pretty generous in the three-year extension in that regard.
And perhaps the applicant can speak to that.
If I look at the Table 1, in the, I'm looking at the resolution, it looks to me as if, it looks to me as if these improvements actually benefit both Phase 1 and Phase 2. In other words, they're sized for full build-out, so I'm not sure how you would break it out if you were to even try to do that, to isolate what was spent for Phase 1, because it's all one ball of wax, isn't it?
It is. That is correct. The improvements were sized for the full facility. Only Phase 1, Unit 1, was reported.
Okay. I may be getting ahead of people here a little bit, but looking at the resolution in that Table 1, when I get to the, the third block, the emergency access road, it says TSTM 1-5 or I-5. That should be 2-5, shouldn't it?
I would have to check that, but you may be correct. We were attempting to roll forward. Certain mitigation measures date all the way back to the Ridge Crest Estates project, certain date back to the Cedar Ridge approval, so, and we're simply rolled over with the numbers unchanged into the second approval. So there are various reference numbers for each mitigation measure, and they, they don't all correspond and they're not all in order. So this may actually reflect a requirement that was put on the project and numbered prior to the sequencing for Cedar Ridge Estates.
We should double-check that, because I can't find a 1-5 that fits, but I see a 2-5 that probably does. And the next block is just, why, why doesn't the 1-2 have a TSTM in front of it? Is it something different?
It came from the same sequence. If you look at the first block, left turn pocket is, is 2-3 and 2-5. That numbering sequence in Block 1, Block 2, and Block 4 differs from the numbering sequence in the third block, because I was pulling from two differently numbered sets of mitigation measures. And I can certainly confirm those.
Okay. The last block has a number of items, CAL FIRE subdivision, conversion exemption, and so forth. $85,000 annual expenditure. Now, how do those, or why do those qualify as part of a good faith effort made in pursuit of meeting the conditions of the map? And if so, what conditions?
This is something that the applicant may be able to address in more detail than I do. This was a number provided to staff as documentation of the ongoing expenses associated with the project. But again, they include a certain amount of planning and engineering costs, so perhaps he can provide a breakdown of the applicability of those individual line items.
Okay, last on this sequence. It appears from one of the attachments, attachment for Table 1, that he established a nonprofit corporation, July 19th of 2005, to form an entity for the maintenance of the private roads. Wouldn't that count as a good faith effort to meet condition 4-1Q of the approval?
Actually, that would, and planning staff is in possession of the business entity detail that identifies that that was done and exactly when it took place. That would be an omission on our part that, that we did not include it in the table.
But we could do that.
We could do that.
Thank you.
Which raises a couple of more questions. The improvement agreement that you were referring to, is that something that has to happen before the approval of subdivision map? Or is that something that happens afterward?
If it's a, if it's done as part of the final map and the intent is to bond for the improvements, then that has to be submitted before the final map is approved.
So that is something that needs to be done during whatever.
The other alternative is actually construct all the improvements before the map is recorded, but that's just typically not done.
Right.
So in the case of this project, in 2005, when the board issued the approval for Phase 1, Unit 1 of the final map, they also, the, the date on the subdivision map agreement was the same. They were two separate actions, two separate documents executed by the board.
And my final question for now is the, I only see in the resolution a provision for three-year. Would it, if we were to say four years, it would just cross out three and put in four?
We would. I, I have a separate resolution, the revised draft, that states six years, but again, at the discretion of the board, the resolution can be revised to reflect whatever decision.
But other than the, the number written out, the resolutions are identical?
They are the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Deborah, going, excuse me, going back to the secondary road, he has bonded to do the improvements to that, is that what you said? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that secondary road, does that leave any part of his property, even though there's an easement? Where is that easement going through? Is it going through his own property that he's now acquired, the pond?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not going through Rancho Paradiso at all?
It does not. If you look at this map right here, the northern boundary, the boundary at the top of the page, this is his approved tentative map. The Rancho Paradiso parcels are reflected by these assessor parcel numbers that you see along the project, project boundary here.
Okay.
So, and as you can see his, you can see the access road clearly on this. It is on his tentatively approved map road, and on, and there is an identified instrument that granted him the access easement through the pond parcel. And the instrument still remains, but at this point, he owns both the easement and the pond parcel.
Okay. And when we're looking at that, there is no plans yet developed as far as secondary accessing the highway, because he's already done all the left-hand turn lane work at the red tail Cedar Ridge entrance. So secondary does not require the left-hand turn lane?
That will be entirely at the discretion of Caltrans. They have certain meets and standards that, that you have to, you have to meet. They will make a determination of what the usage levels are going to be, and if they trip their criteria for acceleration/deceleration lanes, or if it trips their criteria for a turn lane, he will be required to construct those as part of his, his permit.
Okay, well, it's my understanding, secondary is a closed road. That's not an access road unless there were an emergency, then a gate would be opened. Correct?
Well, not necessarily. In this case, it is at this point in time, because there is no development on the northern part of the site. But as he moves forward with the commercial and residential development in the northern half of the site here, and the commercial parcel here, there will be a greater requirement for access, and that becomes a second access, not necessarily a secondary access. And that determination is going to be tied to recordation of the next phase.
Great. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
I've thought of something else.
You know, you're thinking too hard today.
Well, show us the commercial property again.
Oh, my God, it's really hard to read. Perhaps he can, can you point out for me? That one of the parcels is here.
This is a.
Oh, darn it, sorry.
Do we have a, do we have a laser pointer at all?
This is the C2 here.
We do, but they didn't want us to use the laser pointer, because you can't see it on the video.
Oh, we can't see them on the video either.
Well.
Go ahead, John.
This is the C2, and this is the C1.
And then also pointed the R3?
The R3 is up here.
And so the, the previous environmental impact report considered any effect on the adjoining property with the pond of the development of those properties?
Yes, it did.
It required a 100-foot setback.
John, if, for, just to make sure that the public and the tape, if you could speak at the microphone, and maybe, Deborah, you can go back over and just so it's clear on the record with the, not the laser pointer, but the cursor, and just identify the parcels that Mr. Ellis just pointed out.
Okay. Confirm if I'm correct, John. This is the R3 parcel right here.
Yes.
This is the C2 parcel.
Yes.
Right here, general commercial. And down here is the C1, local commercial parcel. This piece down here, containing the Blue Line stream, is the one that is designated as recreational EP combining zone in order to protect the waterway down there. A 100-foot setback has been required from the pond in any of the parcels that, that approach it or include any part of the pond.
Okay.
Okay. If you have no other further questions, I'd like to have Mr. Ellis come up and give us his report, so then we can compile more questions.
Hello, I'm John Ellis, and I'm the developer. I want to clarify a couple of things. When I put in about the discretionary approvals and that there is no more discretionary approvals, I was speaking in terms of zoning and, you know, the basic layout of the subdivision. I recognize that I need to come back to the county when I do a final map, and it needs to be reviewed and approved. But that's more on an administrative, administrative level than it is on a discretionary level. If I meet the conditions, there should be no reason why it's not approved. And as far as the Caltrans, I want to address that. I do have, Debbie, can we put up the subdivision map? Caltrans has already approved, and we've already put in the left-hand turn lane. So I got an encroachment permit for this, and Caltrans looked at this at the same time we have plans in, that were submitted and approved, and this road was constructed to those plans. There's a.
Okay, I'm going to have to have you go back to the mic now, so we can have you on video.
There's a, we had to cross the drainage that feeds the pond to make that road, and so that drainage facility was all put in. An eight-foot covert pipe and several other 24-inch covert pipes were put in. So the crossing and the access, it's, it has an existing access off of Highway 4. And as long as the gate is closed, Caltrans has made clear that, you know, that is suitable. But if that gate, if it ends up upgraded to a higher level of access, then we would have to apply to Caltrans for a access permit there in order to enlarge the access. And that's a permit, and that's, it's really not a discretionary, there again, I go down to Caltrans, it's a permit phase with Caltrans. It wouldn't come in front of the, in front of the Planning Commission.
That, that's your definition? I mean, a perfectly suitable one, but discretionary means come to us?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. That's, that's my definition of discretionary.
Other agencies might be making decisions using their own discretion, but.
On a permit, which is more of an administrative decision.
I get it.
And it's not a public hearing.
Right.
See, discretionary is, to me, is in a public hearing forum.
Got it.
The 85K, the question came up about the 85K per year. In, in the requests, or in the county ordinance requesting an extension of time, one of the criteria, I believe, is that I get other agencies' approvals. And that's why I listed the Department of Real Estate, every five years, I have to get a Department of Real Estate permit in order to sell the lots. I have to maintain a conversion exemption, because I'm converting timberland into non-timberland. So that, that's something that I do periodically with CAL FIRE. And then there's other, you know, I have to maintain the property, I have to, you know, make sure that we don't have dead and dying trees, and I have to get permits through, you know, through CAL FIRE to do that, to remove and to keep the property free of dead and dying trees. Now, a new, I wanted to also share this with you, I just learned of this last week. Our, the Cedar Ridge subdivision has been included in the Arnold Community Plan Fire Break, Fuel Reduction Plan. Could we go to the community?
Oh, golly, is this going to do or?
Yeah, that will do it. John, I think it'd be better if you use the laser pointer, and you can keep on the microphone there.
I couldn't get it to come on. I couldn't figure it out.
All right, there we go. Okay. You see this property here going all the way down through here? This is SPI's property. This is through the Love Creek area. And this is all forest land. Now, in, in another map, you could see down here that there's Davy's property, which is about 900 acres. And then going up in this direction is the CCWD property. And then up at the top of the crest here is what's called the Penny Pines property, which is the fire break that was constructed for the Butte Fire. And so what the CAL FIRE has done is that they have created a community fuel break plan, that they're coming right through my property to go into SPI's property and going right on up into Blue Lake Springs and up behind Big Trees. Now, my property is considered a strategic part of this plan, because what I, not only am I developing roads in order to create access to better fight fires and minimize, or, you know, what do they call it? A defensible space, I also have high-pressure fire hydrants in here. There is, in, in Arnold, it is, the water is served by five 250,000-gallon tanks that are going up the hill, up towards Big Trees. And it starts, the first tank starts just below my project. It's right down in here. And then it goes, the line goes right up through my project and goes on up, and it's right above CAL FIRE is the next tank, and then there's another tank, oh, there's several other tanks going on up this way. So, which brings me to another point. Number one, I would just want to, I'm trying to explain that this project has become part Number one, I would just wanna, I'm trying to explain that this project has become part of the community fuel break plan, so it's important to the community from that standpoint. If we could go to the tentative map, you can see this blue line going through the property here. That's a 16-inch ductile iron pipe that feeds those 250,000-gallon tanks. The water is gathered from Hunter Reservoir, which is down in Avery, and it's pumped up to the first tank here, and then subsequently up to the following tanks going on up. This easement is non, you know, I had to develop the project in order to conform to this easement. Matter of fact, I had to pay to have this portion of that 16-inch ductile iron pipe realigned, so that it would work with the subdivision. So, the limit, the limitation on the design of the subdivision is controlled by this easement here. Likewise, PG&E's transmission lines come through my property going through here, and that controlled the design of the residential lots here in order to be, to allow for the easement, to accommodate the easement coming through the property. So, my point is, is that this project has limited flexibility as far as what can be done to lay it out, but it's been incorporated into the community. Talking about the extensions, the economy was, is, is part of this consideration. The legislature approved six years of extensions due solely to the economic downturn in real estate in this, in this state, in the country. And in the, when you read the, what was discussed in the reason why, the bill analysis, the reason why they approved the bill, is that they cited that they wanted these projects that have been previously approved to be available for when the economic cycle returns. And that's something that government can't control, and I can't control, that is strictly, you know, a consumer-based type of situation. So far, Arnold has not improved economically to the point to where people are building houses again. Could we go to the chart, the building permits charts?
Which one do you want?
This one for, to start with. This is Calaveras County on a whole here. This starts from 1990.
John, can you stand on the other side, so we can see that too, please? Thank you.
This was, started, this date starts in 1990, and it goes up through 2017. This peak is 2006. My project came online, I had the first lots available right at the end of 2005, 2006, and then we fell precipitously down. And since then, the entire county, each one of these lines represents a building district within the county. This green line is the District 3, the Arnold area, the Ebbets Pass area. This peak right here happens to be in the Mountain Ranch area from the Butte Fire, the building permits, and you can see that peak, then it's starting to die out. If we can go to the next, to the next map. This is a close-up, now, this other line here, this reddish line here, this is the remodel permits issued from 1990 through 2017, and this is the single-family new construction permits here. As you can see, they have not recovered at all in our area. It's been, we had a year that there was, I believe, six permits issued throughout our entire district. This year, we have been, from the latest that I've been able to tell, we're running right around 10 permits again this year. So the economy is terrible for new construction, new family residential construction in our area. I think it's still pretty bad in all of Calaveras County. There are some promising signs that it's starting to pick up, but it has not. The problem is, is when you have, fair market value is so below replacement cost, and that's the problem that we're having. People are buying used houses and then putting money into the used houses, and by the time they're done, they're still below the replacement, current replacement cost. So the value of existing homes has to come up before you start seeing the speculative builders start building and putting houses on the market, because they aren't gonna build and lose money. But what this chart shows is how the remodels, I believe that the remodels will eventually start dying out, and it will start bringing this line on up. And so, the point that I'm trying to make here is, I don't know if it's gonna be three years or six years, but what I do know is that when it occurs, I have to be ready to go. And it's just like this approval process right here. I made application in April of last year, and it's September, it's a year and a half later, and we're finally having this hearing. If this, if the economy started back in 2017, and I couldn't do anything until this hearing, I have missed, right now, a year and a half of being able to put new improvements in and bring new lots on the market. So that's why I'm asking for the six years. If it was, if my project had not already put in the left-hand turn lane and put in the sewage lift station and all this infrastructure, then you would have, you know, I think that would be a good argument that, well, you're asking us to give you a long extension, but you haven't done much. In this, in my subdivision, I've put all those in, I've done everything. The only thing I need to do is when I record a new map for new lots, I just have to extend the road to those map, to those new lots, and I have to extend the sewer and the water and the public utilities to those lots. And everything is stubbed out. All I have to do is, if I do the final map, I connect on to the last manhole, and I collect on to the last water valve, and I click, I connect on to the last power feed and phone feed, and I extend it out to the rest of the subdivision. So that's all that needs to be done. And other than that, I really don't know what else to say unless you have some questions for me that I can clarify for you.
Do you want to start at that end and work our way down? Okay.
Following up on what you just said, is it the case that to meet the conditions of the map, you have to actually extend the roads and the sewer lines to each of these lots?
Yes, it is a requirement of the, if I, if I, beyond the first 35 lots, which I've already put the roads and the sewer lines, and they're all stubbed out to the lots, they're ready to connect, if I go and I want to create more lots, then yes, I have to extend the road, and then I have to put the sewer into each one of those lots.
And so, you obviously wouldn't want to do that until the need arises.
Right. It does not make economic sense for me to go into that expense at this time until I start seeing some lot sales again.
And so that, would you say that is the major reason why you're requesting six years?
Yes, because I've just gone through, my last lot sale was September of 2006. I have not had a lot sale since September of 2006, and I've been keeping the subdivision afloat, and I went ahead and did all the improvements into, you know, the sewage lift station and all my responsibilities, just to keep the map alive. And I've just been sitting on my hands, waiting for a viable economy up there, so I can start selling lots again and people start building homes again.
The parcel that you acquired to get the emergency access road, you paid, what, $280,000 for that parcel?
Yes.
Can you, can that parcel be used for purposes other than just the access road?
Yeah, it would have to go through the planning process.
What I'm trying to get at is whether the entire $280,000 should be attributable to a good faith effort to meet the conditions of the map, or some part of it, because you have a parcel that you can use for purposes other than just the access road, and that's worth something.
Technically, yes. It's a, there's a problem, that parcel has a lot of issues. It has a lot of wetlands that are feeding this pond, and so the development of this parcel is gonna be limited. There's one section right here that really has no environmental concerns, to which maybe some lots could be put in up here. But then there's another section here that I envision one day down the road that we can put some RV storage for the subdivision in here. But the, the rest of the property is pretty much, so there's a spring over here, and the drainage comes down through here. What I envision doing eventually is doing a lot line adjustment and taking this parcel here and go ahead and grab all this wetlands and all this drainage and put it all in a Rex XEP. So that will, really, there's limited value to that piece of property. The, and let me clarify, too, the reason why I paid $280,000 for the property was, that was the deal that I had to make in order to get the easement, to get the road across, that I would buy the property. So the property was bought solely for the easement.
Could you give us an estimate as to what the, what the value of that property is burdened by the easement?
I've never really thought about it, but I imagine it is less than what I paid for it, actually.
Okay, what I'm trying to get at is whether we should be breaking out that 280 into two components. In other words, the cost of the easement itself and the cost of the rest of the property.
Well, the easement, and the improvements on the easement are actually a requirement of the, of the map.
Right, I understand that, but you got a lot more than an easement. In other words, if you'd have just, if you had been able to just acquire the easement, you would have paid less than $280,000, I assume.
Yes.
So what I'm trying to get at is, what's the easement worth?
The easement, that's sort of a rough number to get to, because in order for the subdivision to be viable, you have to have the easement.
No, I understand.
So it's an integral part of the subdivision. I would not be able to even have the subdivision without that easement.
No, I got that, what I, and I don't want to belabor this, we have a $280,000 figure on the table that is given to us as part of the good faith effort to meet conditions of the map. That $280,000 bought more than what was needed to meet the conditions of the map. And I'm trying to figure out how much that more is worth, just so we get an accurate number.
And I do understand what you're getting at is, but what I'm trying to explain to you is that I had to buy the property in order to get the easement. So if I hadn't bought the property for the $280,000, I would not have the easement. And if I didn't have the easement, I would not have the subdivision.
So you're saying you want to apply the full 280 towards the acquisition and meeting your terms?
Yeah, exactly. If down the road, the remainder of the property becomes viable to some extent, then, you know, I will concede then that there is some value to the remainder of that property. But to me, right now, that property's value is only that easement.
There are a number of numbers that make up the $761,000 for the water distribution, the wastewater facilities, the sewer lift station. Are those, are those hard costs?
Yes, if you will take a look at, like in my letter, Exhibit C. It's the last couple pages of your package.
It's on, in Attachment 6.
Yeah, I see the numbers, but I wonder where they came from.
Okay, those numbers came from the cost, the exact cost that CC, that the Calaveras County Water District and myself, they reviewed my hard cost, and that's what was put down on here. Their engineer, if you notice, their engineer signed this, Steve Hutchinson, and he reviewed it, and that's what was agreed upon, the value of the improvements that I had put in. And, which included the sewage lift station, which was sized for the entire subdivision. Right now, it's only working with 35 lots, but it's designed to handle some 400 and some odd connections.
There's your question.
So we, those are good costs?
Those are good costs.
Okay, back to the $85,000, it's also shown on the table. And I understand your point about having to comply with other agencies' requirements as being a condition, but what about the property taxes, the insurance, the marketing, the road maintenance and repair? I understand you have to do those things to have a viable project, but I'm not understanding how those can be counted towards meeting conditions of the map.
The road maintenance and repair would definitely be because that's, because the county didn't accept the roads into the public system. So it's a requirement, a condition of approval, that the property owners maintain that road. And, so the cost to maintain that road is an ongoing cost in order to satisfy the conditions of approval.
Okay. What about the taxes and insurance and marketing?
Well, the taxes for, on that road and those improvements are necessary, you know, in order to maintain the subdivision. You have to pay the taxes on those improvements. The insurance, there again, I have to provide insurance, because it's not a public road, but it's open to, it's not open to the public, but, you know, as long as I have the gates open and I'm trying to sell it to the public, I have to provide insurance in order to protect me to have the public access in there to look at my lots, to sell those lots. And if it was a, if the county had taken that, those roads in on a dedication, then I wouldn't have to worry about liability on those roads. It would not exist.
No, I understand the business reasons why those are necessary costs. Where I was having trouble is how do they tie to conditions of the map?
Well, the road maintenance is definitely tied to the conditions of the map, and as was the nonprofit, the Road Maintenance Committee was a condition of approval of the map.
And that is one that's not shown on the table, but probably should be?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any further questions.
You said that the last time you sold a lot was in 2006?
Yes.
Since that date, can you tell us how much you've spent in terms of the project expenditures as they were listed in Table 1? How much of these numbers were spent since that date?
Well, that's a hard number to come up with, because, you know, we were, it was ongoing construction at the time, and I tried to break it out, but it's very difficult, because I had to look at the project as a whole. I didn't, I didn't have a set of improvements that we did up to the time of the recordation of the map, and then a set of improvements after the recordation of the map. The improvements started before the recordation of the map, and it continued long after the recording of the map.
But I'm trying to focus on the date you sold the last lot.
Okay, on the last lot, the last lot was sold in September 2006. I didn't finish the sewage, the wastewater and sewer facilities until, I believe it was 2008.
The recordation was in '08. When did you actually pay the money?
Probably, I don't know when, I can't really remember, when was this done? This was done April, I imagine 2007.
After selling that lot?
After selling the lots, yes.
And you acquired the pond parcel in '06?
In April of 2006.
April, and that's obviously when you paid the 280. I had asked earlier about a four-year, or actually, I had asked for three years from today's date, which would be four years and three or four months, I believe, somewhere in that range from the June 17 date. Would that be sufficient for you to...
I, underneath the current economic conditions, I'm not seeing any improvement. It's very concerning, and that's why I'm asking for the six years, because I can tell you, I'm not putting any more money in the subdivision until I start seeing some serious sales and seeing some construction, because it just doesn't make any sense economically... and seeing some construction. Because it just doesn't make any sense, economic sense, financial sense, to keep pouring money into something that's not returning any money.
How many lots are unsold?
Right now, 25 are unsold.
And that's been true since '06?
Yes.
You do understand the county's just touting an increase in property values in Calaveras County to explain how they balance the budget for this coming year. And so according to those statements, the property taxes are up.
I can speak to that.
And the building, I see buildings in the Valley Springs area. I don't go to Arnold's, so I don't know what's going on up there.
This year, we had a couple of spec houses. This is the first year that I've really seen any spec houses built. And they're small, they're smaller, they're in the, I think, believe around the $400, $450,000 range. And they're being built in the old, I'm only aware of one that Doug Bales is actually building right now, but I heard there might be several other ones. It's still a very sketchy market. The builders up there are very reluctant to build any new homes because the very first thing that happens is when you build a new home is a potential buyer says, well, I can go buy this existing house over here in this existing neighborhood for $350,000, and you're building a new home and you want $400, $500,000. You know, you need to come down in your price. And for someone to do that, then they're going to lose money if they're going to bring down the price. Since 2006, the California regulations on, the building code regulations have not stopped. Matter of fact, I read an article that since 2010 through 2017, it was projected in California, the average cost of a house due to building regulations alone went up by $100,000. You know, we just had, we're going to have a requirement that every house starting in 2020 has to have solar panels regardless, which really doesn't make too much sense to me because we have canopy of trees up there and the solar panels are going to be pretty useless. But from what I'm reading is it doesn't matter. You still have to put the solar panels on your roof. And so that's just going to keep driving the cost of housing up. It's just, that's just what we're confronted. That's what the building industry is confronted with today.
That's all I have.
Seems to me the building industry should be going to the legislature and having the economic situation be one of the considerations that can be considered for these sort of extensions of time. I mean, the legislature did a blanket extension because of the economic considerations, but that's expired. And it makes it hard for a planning commissioner to say, oh, that's one of the things we can consider, when it's not one of the things that's specified in the statute that we're operating under. Other than the economic conditions, which I fully understand is a driving force as to what your decisions are and the extension of time that you need, what is, what do you see is left to do in order to, that you have to do before you submit the map for final approval?
Well, I would have to finish the engineering. And like what Peter explained is, we would record a final map. I'd have to enter into-
No, but I mean, before the final map is entered, what do you have to do?
I would just have to file, until I file that map, I really don't know. But as far as the conditions, the current conditions of approval, putting in the roads and the utilities, that's all I have to do.
You have to actually put in the roads before the map is approved?
No. I would have to have plans submitted to the Public Works. They would have to be approved. And then a dollar amount would have to be put on them. And then a bond would have to be determined in order to bond it. Then I'd have to enter into a developer's agreement. And then I could come to the Planning Commission and ask for approval for recordation of a next phase map.
Okay. And so that's basically what, assuming right now that the economy just boomed and you wanted to get this done as soon as possible, that's the primary thing that would be left to do, is to work things through with the Building Department and get the bonds and get the agreement, and then you could get the map.
Right. And I've actually got it primed right now. I'm ready, you know, we're going to have to do some tweaking on the plans because, you know, if anything's changed or, you know, it's just going to be minor stuff. But I'm primed to do that. If we had a surge of sales, I would go right into the next phase.
And now on the Phase One, the lots that did sell, could those people build houses on them?
They already have.
We have five-
Oh, you do?
Five homes, and they're all over a million dollars in there. They're beautiful homes. We're building really nice homes in there. And I'll tell you, I have people come on in, they love this subdivision. I don't know if you've ever been in there, but this is, I've had more comments and just people just giving me praise for a nice job in there. Matter of fact, several times I'm used as an example, you know, this is what we want in this county, you know? So I've tried to do that. When I started this project, it was extremely controversial because it was associated with a land exchange from the U.S. government to private. What they did is they, it was this program where they were taking non-contiguous property that was U.S. Forest Service land in exchange in it for private lands contiguous to the U.S. forests. And so this was, 80 acres of this was part of that. And so when the Boy Scouts sold it, there was a lot of controversy in the community because they thought it would never be sold. And that was unknown to me. I walked into a beehive on that one because it had happened prior. But since then, the community has been, even many of the foes that were against me, now that I've done this, I've had them come in and, like I said, they've given me praise about, they really like what I've done in there. They like how I am very conscious about all the wetlands, how I'm keeping everything, you know, back away from it, and I'm trying to preserve the natural state of that subdivision. That's part of what we're selling in that subdivision is I want the wildlife. I want all that because that's why people come in and buy and build in there to retire, is they want to retire in that environment.
Thank you.
So the question surrounding resale and cost of new construction is so far apart that it doesn't make sense to buy and build new construction yet. Until we've seen full recovery, we have to see the cost of existing construction and new come together in prices. And they're way far apart at this point. So him saying I've only sold five, or the 11 lots, I've only got, the last one was in 2006, that is reflective of the entire market in our area on lot sales. Not home sales, but lot sales. So when Commissioner Pacelli was saying, well, the county is basing their budget on all these new taxes, a lot of that was, our assessor was way behind. She got caught up or is trying to. The other thing is, is that our market values have seen some increases, but it's on existing construction. It's not on lot sales. If you look at lot sales, I mean, I can tell you right now, I had one listed for $28,000. I just reduced it to 20. There is no lot sales happening. And when they are, they're very few and they're way undervalued compared to what they were 10 years ago. So I understand your economic reasoning behind that. It makes total sense because I'm in that market and I see it as well. You talked, as far as when we're talking about what you still have to do, do you have any SEQA reports left that you would have to do? How many have you done?
There's been three done by the Planning Department since the inception of this project, two done in the 90s and one done in the 2004 approval. I've also had two timber harvest plans that have been done on the property that went through SEQA. And those harvest plans did not reveal any sensitive environmental concerns. Now, there's yet another CAL FIRE SEQA environmental review that was done when they did the community fuel break plan. So I've been reviewed six times in 20 years on this project.
Would you have to do any more SEQA reports for the second phase and the third phase?
No.
You're complete.
I'm complete.
Okay. Do you have concerns about what they're discussing at the county with the 30-foot setbacks and how big are your lots?
Well, my lots are 120 feet, on the average, 120 feet wide by 190 feet deep. Now, that will change depending upon the location of the lot and the curve of the road. You may have a narrower front and a wider back. But the eight, the half acre, I've tried to be very consistent on, on trying to provide for each lot. Now, the 30-foot setback is going to create a problem because that's going to leave me with only 60 feet frontage of house that can be built. And most people, that's going to be very restrictive. I'm not sure, the problem with this whole concept or this discussion about the 30-foot setback is very unclear. If you read 4192, I think it's 4192 that they're citing of the Public Resource Code, it contemplates the fact that the 30 feet will go over into someone else's property. So I don't understand how they're saying that it's supposed to come 30 feet from your property line in. That's one issue. Number two, there's another issue, is that the location of a house on a lot is a decision of land use. It's not a building structure decision. And what has happened here is that the Building Department has adopted a setback that through the building code that should really be done by the county through their discretion and their sole discretion of determining zoning.
I was just worried that your lots were big enough to accommodate that, so you weren't economically going to be able. That's my only question.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So I think at this point, I think we've got all the answers we were looking for question-wise, and I think we should probably take it to public comment. You, I'm sorry, you want to take a break?
Could I make one additional statement?
Yes.
Pursuant to this slide that I've got up here, when I extracted the relevant code section for extension of time, requiring an applicant to provide evidence demonstrating that a good faith effort has been made in pursuing conditions of the map, the way the code is phrased is that these actions may include, but are not limited to, the three, pursuing approval, engineered design plans, and actual construction. So 16.08.040 seems to be suggesting that there is a certain amount of flexibility to consider other issues as well.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break and we'll be back at 10:35. Back to order, please. Behind me, please. Okay. So now we're going to go to public comment. If anybody in the public has anything they would like to say. Seeing nobody coming to the mic, I will close public comments and bring it back. And Debra, do you have anything additional you would like to add?
I'm a happy camper.
That's nice. John, you have something you want to add? You have one minute.
Can I have a question for the-
Oh, yes, you absolutely can have a question.
I came in today with, under the impression that the easement for the secondary road had been acquired before he bought the property. But as I understand it, it was part and parcel. But do you agree with his view that he had to buy the property in order to get the easement for the secondary parcel?
That's entirely a matter between him and the seller. All we know is that in order for Cedar Ridge to receive its tentative approval, that access easement was required.
Yeah, okay. But it didn't exist before he bought the property, the easement itself?
It did not.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Can I expound?
Just one second. I want to make sure none of the commissioners have any questions for Debra. Okay, now we'll go directly to you.
Let me talk a little bit about the emergency access.
We're going to keep your time this long.
Okay. But the emergency access was a condition of approval in order, that was a condition to file for the first map. But the emergency access road does not serve the first unit. The reason why they required it is that they want, because it had to go across someone else's property. So they wanted to ensure that if this map goes forward, that I did that with the first unit. But it doesn't serve the first unit until the road is connected to the first unit. So it was meeting a condition of approval and technically it's for the next unit. It's not for the first unit. That's what you need to understand about the emergency access. I bought the property in 1990, and I bought the emergency access road easement in 2006.
I'm glad you were as young as you were in 1990.
I was 35 years old. And this was going to be a two-year project.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
Man and Chair, I just, I didn't get a chance to say anything when you were asking. I just wanted to make sort of one sort of summary statement and then a recommendation on the resolution. The issue here that we're trying to determine is that he's made a good faith effort towards completing conditions, towards the subsequent phases, the part of the map that hasn't been recorded. I think there's a lot of intermixing of what was required for Phase One with subsequent phases. Your action, your decision needs to be, has he made a good faith effort towards, you know, complying with conditions, meeting the conditions that would allow him to record a subsequent phase? Along those lines, on page three of four of the resolution, I would recommend a language change at the top of the page under evidence. And I would strike the words "made progress" and substitute it with "demonstrated a good faith effort." That's the language of the code section. And the findings need to be made. It says, "If the Planning Commission determines to grant the extension, it shall make a finding based upon evidence in the public record that a good faith effort has been demonstrated towards meeting the conditions of the map." And so that statement would be, the applicant has demonstrated a good faith effort towards the completion of conditions, et cetera. I think it correlates with the finding that needs to be made. And that finding is really up to you, whether you feel that he has demonstrated, and there's information in the record that shows that. And I don't think that the dollar amount is really critical. It helps to support the finding, but whether it was, you know, $280,000 or $100,000, that doesn't really matter. As long as you feel that those, the steps that he's taken show good faith and attempt to move forward with the project, not including Phase One that's already recorded, that's sort of off the table. What we're looking at is subsequent, the rest of the map at this point.
Okay. What does it cost you to come before the commission to ask for extensions?
Well, it's a 12, I think it was $1,200, something like that for a filing fee. And then I had to spend about $5,000 for illegal, you know, opinions. And then, you know, just accumulating the-
So the fee at the county is $1,200 for you to come back?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's it.
Can I ask Mr. Mar a question? Are we setting, or have we set precedent in the past in these situations? Are we, if we were to go to the six years, is that very unusual, the very first time ever done? Do we do it often? What's the prior district?
Since I've been here, we have granted two or three map extensions. They have each been for three years. I think because of the state legislation, there hasn't been the need for extensions until just over the last year or two, that timeframe. Because map approvals essentially stopped in 2007 or '08 when the economy dropped. Everyone just sort of said, there's no reason for me to move forward. A lot of maps were just put on hold. So there've been no new approvals since that time. The six or seven years that were granted by the state sort of led us through this timeframe. And now we're beginning to see map extension requests because that, the state automatic extensions have been utilized. And now, you know, they're in the situation of Mr. Ellis here where if I don't get an extension, my map dies. I don't want to have that happen. But there's no market to continue to make serious investments and actually record the maps at this point. So they're looking for additional time in the hopes that the economy will turn around and it makes economic sense to invest in more lots in the county.
Can I make one more comment?
Since we're still open, yeah, I haven't shut.
Okay. And then on the timeframe, from the time that I made application for the extension to this present date, number one- the extension to this present date, um, number one, I guess during the first 60 days I could have filed a map, but after that I couldn't, so I'm sort of, I'm, 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 I couldn't do that. I couldn't go to a bank and let's just say that if things had improved last year and I said, oh boy, I need to get going, I need to start this next unit. With this automatic extension, there's no consistency in it and a bank would not work with me with a, on those terms. I have to have something that the county would have to have approved for me to go to a bank and give them documentation so that they, they would loan me money to go for the next phase. And I have not had that for the last, um, you know, uh, since April of last year minus the 60 days. So that's something else that you should take in, I wish you would take in consideration when looking at this.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, on that note, I'm going to go ahead and plug, you don't have any questions? You do? Okay.
Yeah, I, I have one more question and it has to do with the, the putting in the roads and utilities to the lots. I first understood it to be that you had to actually construct the roads and extend the utilities before you could record the map and now I think I understand that you don't actually have to do that, but you have to have plans submitted and approved, get a bond and get an agreement with the county to approve it. Is that right?
Yes, and it's time sensitive, though. It only gives you so much time to do that.
Okay, that's where I was going, why, why wouldn't you just do that now and I think you just answered it.
Right, I couldn't get a, right, but I couldn't even get a bond right now with the inconsistency of the status of my subdivision. Bonding company wouldn't even write me right now.
But, but if you were to get, say, a three or four-year extension, then you could get a bond, the problem is the bond would expire or could expire before conditions change where you could use it.
Yes, and chances of me getting a bond in this market is next to nil. I don't think they would even write the bond.
But how long are those bonds typically good for? Can you get them different periods?
Well, you can get them for whatever period, you know, you can, I could enter into a development agreement, for example, which is, I believe that's unlimited as far as the time, it's only what the planning department would decide.
Well, a development agreement is a whole different ball of wax, but, um, and typically those are good for 10 or 20 years, but a subdivision improvement agreement, um, is usually good for a year with an ability to extend that. Um, the idea is that, you know, the maps recorded of those lots now exist, we want to see the improvements on the ground and, and people able to utilize that if they're buying lots. So that, the subdivision improvement agreement is typically good for a year. Um, the, the bonds, um, are, my recollection, and this could have changed and I had not directly involved, but more perfectly involved, is, you know, usually a three-year lifespan on the, on the bonds and then they have to be reissued.
Okay, I got it.
And bonds are very tough to get today.
And they cost money.
They cost a lot of money today.
Why are they tough to get?
Just because of the state of the economy and the state of the, the construction industry in these rural areas.
Yeah, there's a, there're greater risks that somebody's just going to default and walk away.
Very high risk, right. There is not even construct, if you went out and you pulled a building permit today and you wanted to build a new home and get a loan, a construction loan, I know of only one bank that just started last year giving construction loans, which is Motherload Bank and Sonora. Eldorado Bank, which is built-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Okay, well, it's just, it's built on that and they don't do construction loans. They, they, they build a bank on construction loans.
Thank you, John. Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for deliberations. Um, I can just kind of start and tell you guys where I'm at with this. Even if we said you're going to get your full six-year extension, he's only going to get five years and a couple months because a lot of his time is already burned out. He, out of all the projects that we've actually reviewed and looked at for extensions, he has done more to this project than any other project that I have looked at. Um, as far as the roads, the left-hand turn lane, I drive by it every day and I'm very grateful that left-hand turn lane is there because one street over is a subdivision that you can see skid marks forever. So he's done everything right, he's done all the improvements that are impacting the community around him. If, you know, the left-hand turn lane wasn't done and people were still going in and out of there and we were waiting for those improvements, I'd say, you know what, let's put him on a short leash, but I think he's done what needs to be done and now the, uh, the things that are left to do are only to his benefit, not ours. I can't see bringing him back in a few years to pay more money to come before us to say, no, I didn't sell any more lots, so I didn't do anything. He may have to start reducing the price of his lot so that he can get done before that five years is over with, but that's up to him. It's his property, it's his investment, not ours. So I am in favor of giving him the full six years because it's really only five, that's my opinion.
Sounds good to me.
I, I agree with you 100% except the math is four years, nine months.
Thank you.
Four years, it's less than five.
Thank you.
And that's a very short time period in light of this situation, so I'm totally in favor of the six-year extension.
Thanks for correcting me publicly.
I mean, I was, I, I said five earlier, but I guess now did the math and it really is four years, nine months, that's not, that's silly to, to do anything less than that, in my opinion.
I agree with the chairperson. Um, one of my notes was, he's done so much to meet the conditions of the map so far that, he kind of tends to cut against him on the length of time for the extension, because there's not too much left to do and, you know, that seems to be a sort of an upside-down way of looking at it, would penalize him. And I think he's given us perfectly good reasons why the time more than three years is, is in order, particularly given the conditions in that part of the county. Things may be different in other parts of the county. I would, um, I do have questions about some of the expenses, but I think the point that the exact dollar amounts don't have to be precise is probably correct. I do think that the resolution should include the establishment of the nonprofit corporation for the maintenance of the private roads.
I would agree with that.
And, um, other than that, I have a couple typos on the resolution. On page two of four, under the evidence, the second paragraph starts, none of the triggering criteria of section 21166, the Public Resources Code have been met, should be has. And the third from the bottom line, same paragraphs, is regarding the project site and/or its resources, no apostrophe for its.
Hang on, do I, tell me where you are after that one? Same page?
Same page, same paragraph, the third line from the bottom, it starts regarding the project site.
Got it.
And then, of course, we have to put, um, September 13th on the second whereas clause on that page. It says, whereas during a duly notice public hearing on month-to-day.
Got it.
And of course, I agree with-
I'm going to catch that one.
Off the page.
Got it.
And I agree with, um, the planning director's suggestions on the third page at the top to conform with the ordinance and that's all I have.
May I make one additional proposed revision to the resolution?
Let's hear it.
Um, go to, um, the bottom of page 104, whereas the planning commission's practice has been, wait a minute, to me, whereas the planning department procedure and policy is to allow for a maximum, um, time extension, I believe that needs to say planning commission, planning commission's practice.
I would suggest we just delete that whereas, since you're going for a six, six-year, we can just delete.
My actual correction follows this, but I had, um, considered another whereas, the planning commission at its discretion may make a determination that an extension of time exceeding three years is warranted, given the size and scope of the development and the economic conditions in the county at this time. Yea or nay?
If you could do without that whereas, that would be fine.
Okay, so just take out both whereses?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hesitate to, to actually have in there the economic conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fine, I think it's done, yeah. Okay, so.
Well, you hesitate to do that, but shouldn't it be in there at least commenting on the economic conditions in that portion of the county? Because you could argue that there are parts of the county where in fact, homes are selling, so.
But under the code, is that really a factor that we can weigh in on and we're better off just to go with the fact that we believe that he's made the good faith effort? Because then that is coverage under the ruling.
I think that if you want to have a statement as to why you granted six years rather than three, it probably would be better in the latter part, be it therefore resolved in a statement in there, rather than as a whereas, um, you know, something to the effect that, you know, the planning commission finds that there is, um, you know, due to the unique economic circumstances, what, you know, whatever finding you want to put in there, um, just add that as an additional statement of your findings.
I would be good with that.
Yeah.
I, I just think it's playing with fire because it's-
Yeah?
It's not one of the, there, I can see arguments on good faith efforts, that sounds like what has he done to satisfy the conditions of the map? Well, that would be things that he has done. What has the world done to him, uh, in economic conditions? That's, I think, may not fit clearly under that. So I'm thinking maybe it's best not to mention the economic conditions as a specific reason for our decision.
But there's, and, and he can't, yeah, separate, I, I would recommend that Mr. Ladish's thoughts are probably appropriate. We know, certainly if the issue came up at some, you know, this is all part of the public record, you know, all of our deliberation here.
That's what I understand, what I just said is part of the public.
Yes, and so I think that, you know, we know that this was in, and it could be a completely different circumstance on the next, um, you know, map, map extension request and you'll, you know, have to look at it then, you know, at that time. So I, I don't think it's necessary. If you felt like you wanted to put something in there, you could certainly craft a, a statement as to why six years was appropriate in this map, but I don't think it's necessary.
The, the code doesn't really speak to the criteria for the length of the extension. It speaks to the criteria to show that there's a good faith effort that has been made in the past and so I'm comfortable not putting anything in here about why it's six years or why it's five years or-
I agree, I'm good with that.
Anything else on it?
So that entire whereas is gone. You good?
I'm good.
Commissioner Bocelli?
I'll abstain.
Okay, so there's three of us that say yes. Um, okay, so on that note, I will need to say, do we need to rewrite this or are we good with what we have with the changes we've made for adopting it?
Um, I think we can just simply make the edits that have been identified here, um, we'll add, you know, there's the, correct the date, correct the timeframe, uh, the grammatical errors in the evidence, the change at the top of page three and then, um, the establishment of the nonprofit corporation for maintenance of roads would be added to the last, um, box on the table.
Okay.
And that, I think, covers all of the edits that were made, so we can just go ahead with, the resolution is amended.
Okay, so can I get a motion to?
So can I, can I ask, um, in the whereses on page one, did you say the last one was deleted?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, um, okay, so and then the evidence is the one where demonstrated good faith effort.
Yep. The one on page three or four, top?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll, I'll move that, the resolution, 2018-055 as of just.
I should have had her read the recommendation first, I'm sorry.
Shall I read it?
Please.
Recommend that the planning commission adopt revised resolution 2018-055 approving a six-year extension of time for the approved tentative subdivision tract map 2003-032 for the Cedar Ridge project, based on the findings included therein and subject to the conditions previously approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we change the title, where's after six-year extension time to June 10, 2023?
Yes, that, that was one of the corrections we previously identified.
Just to make sure. And I would move to, uh, adopt that resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
So who was the second?
Uh-
The second.
Thank you. Okay.
And this action is final, let's appeal to the, to the board supervisor within 15 calendar days.
Don't appeal it, John.
Don't worry. Thank you all.
Thank you, have a good day.
Good luck.
Okay, so moving on, there are no action items, no informational items, no study session, and do we have any commissioner reports?
Yes, I do. I just want to say, when it comes to the Wednesday night and I look into my email and I find some, uh, very pertinent observations and advice from the county council, I'm very appreciative and thank you very much.
I'm sorry about Wednesday night.
Well, the world is war-
What did I miss?
Actually, nothing.
Okay, um, any other director or planning commissioner reports?
No.
You have any reports?
Uh, just that, uh, we are reviewing the comment letters on the general planning IR, it's going to be quite a task and I do not have a timeframe of when that will be completed.
Probably 2020, anyway. Um, on that note, is there any, I guess we're going to adjourn, we don't do public comment at the end anymore. We're done. Have a great day.
Yes.